Taking time out of your busy schedules to be here for this meeting. We're really excited, as you can tell, about the news that we want to share. But we don't take it lightly that you've taken time out of your schedules to be here. So, thank you so much for being here and for your commitment to the church. So, I'm going to start us off with the prayer and then we'll get started. So, if you wouldn't mind pausing the chewing or whatever you've got to do, and let's pray. Let's pray. Good gracious God, we are surrounded by, right in this moment, reminders of your blessing, and your grace, and your presence. But Lord, it was, what, 30 years ago? That a community of people felt led by you to begin a church right here in this community? It was back in the mid 90s, I think, that the ground was broken? That there was a, right outside these doors, a prayer service lifting up all of the future people who would come to know you through this place. And so, here we are, God, representatives of one of those, or even a few of those generations of people. And we firmly and faithfully believe, Lord, that you are at work in this place. And that you call us, Lord, to faithfully follow where you're leading, step by step by step, so that we could continue the work that was begun. That we could continue to live into the vision you placed for this church in this community. And ultimately, Lord, we will be a light on the hill. We would be those who become disciples, but also make disciples, all in an effort to bring transformation into the lives of those in this community. And so, be with us in this time together, Lord. Open our spirits to receive all that you have before us. Open our hearts to hear and to catch a vision for what you're laying out before us, Lord. Let us be thoughtful and inquisitive, but let this be a spirit in this room of grace. For we humbly, Lord, come before you, ready to follow. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen. So, I want to go to our first slide, Sean. When we think back about the vision of Peace Church, it is to be a light on the hill for our community. I mean, is that, can we just say amen to that if you believe that? That that's part of the vision of our church? That was a really cautious amen. Are we called to be a light on the hill and to change and transform lives? Right? It's all about making disciples, friends. That's what our vision of our church is. Learning to live like Christ is not just a way of life. It is about discipleship. And we have to maximize our efforts to do that, right? And so, I think about this scripture in Matthew. This is the problem when you don't get to preach in the regular service. Now, I'm going to start doing like a little sermon if that's, now I'm just playing. Oh, this is a tough room. So, no, so think about this, these are words from Christ as he taught. You are the light of the world. That a town built on a hill can't be hidden. We're not supposed to put our light under a table, right? We're supposed to place it up high to let it shine bright in order to reach as many people as possible. And so, that brings us to this thing that we're calling Project Lighthouse. Because we are ready to go to the next level in terms of how we are maximizing our ministry opportunity as a church to do this very thing that Christ has taught us. Can you go to the next slide, Sean? So, this whole Project Lighthouse, really the vision for this project specifically is that we want to enable our church to support and to welcome and to shine this light by meeting the needs of people in our community and in our congregation. That's what we're aiming to do. If you can go to the next slide. And so, this is something that we did many years, not many years ago, but it's been a handful of years. We, if you remember, if you've been around for a while, we pulled together a team and we did what we called a community needs assessment. We went out into the community and we met with people that are business owners. We met with the schools. We met with neighbors. And we asked them questions and we tried to get a handle on what are the main concerns of our community today? And there were, as you can imagine, all sorts of things. I'll bet if I were to ask all of you in the room today, you would give me, you know, 25, 30 different answers of what the most pressing needs are in our community. But there are three things that seemed to bubble up to the surface that we felt really drawn to. And quite honestly, we looked at and went, yeah, we can move the needle a little bit with these three. Doesn't mean we're not trying to address any other needs, but let's kind of train our efforts specifically on these three to really make a strategic effort in transforming the community. And so, those were food insecurity, mental health, and education. Those are the three areas. And so, you know, what you've seen from us in some of our mission work that we're doing, our service projects, they're geared toward these needs. One of the things that you've heard us talk about quite a bit is Christian Help. It's this amazing organization in Maitland, I believe, that is basically providing food, but also educational services and all sorts of other things to the community of people there that are in need. And so, it's been a great partnership that we have with them. We think about mental health, friends. I mean, does anybody want to stand up and disagree that there's a mental health crisis in our world today? And then you kind of pull that down to the country and then you pull that down to our community. And there are people who are thirsting and starving for that kind of help and support, right? And then education, my goodness. There's all sorts of studies coming out about the impact that early education can have, not just in a child's life, but how it impacts the stability of the overall family. And so, these three areas are all things that we've been trying to gear our work toward. We've got a thriving preschool. We've got partnerships with the middle school. It's right next door to us. We've got, you know, these partnerships with Christian Help and other things. So, let's go to the next slide, because I feel like I'm starting to lose you a little bit. Let me just give you a little bit of help in understanding some of these places. So, Christian Help, they're the leader in Central Florida for the work that they're doing, where they are, they aren't just like handing out food without any kind of connection to the people that are receiving it. They are building relationships. If you come there and you receive food, they know you. I was there a couple of weeks ago. We were over there, right? And some people hadn't come by to pick up their food. They were on the phone calling them. Hey, George, you gotta get over here. You know, you gotta come get your food. And they don't just hand out food. They meet with you and they talk about your desires for work and they try to help you get connected to employment opportunities. I mean, it's an amazing effort that's very relational building and it really builds dignity within the people that are receiving this help. So, let's go to the next one. You know, we've, like I said, we've got a thriving, exciting preschool ministry here in our church, but we also really believe in the power of what God can do through the students as they get older, right? And so, we feel like, you know, there's a lot of great things that are happening in our youth ministry. We saw evidence of that today. And my goodness, there's just, there's more that we can do in that way. Let's go to the next slide. And then, think about counseling. You know, what if we had our own counseling center right here in our church that provided specific counseling, not just to the people of this, of our congregation, but it was a community counseling center where anybody could come and receive that kind of support through our ministry? And so, you put all this together, and if you can go to the next slide. What are we talking about when we're talking about Project Lighthouse? We're talking about leveraging the expertise of people around us that we have relationships with, that are already proven that they're doing these things well, and how can we strengthen that partnership with them? We're talking about looking at our building, looking at our property, and honestly, looking at the people that are a part of this thing and using those assets. Those are assets that we have. There's blessings that God has given us, and using them fully to glorify God and to be that light. I mean, just take a look. How many of you all have noticed that we have a lot of land on our property, right? You know that land's been there for a long time, right? And so, I don't think it's quite a full 30 years or over 30 years, but it's, but let's just call it 30 years for the sake of the discussion. 30 years that land has sat there. Don't you think it's time we do something with that land? Yeah. Yeah. We're looking at reducing, you know, the ongoing costs, because doing ministry isn't cheap. And as we all know, the world just seems to have gotten way more expensive and pricey, right? And so, we're constantly looking at ways that we can reduce the costs of what we're doing, but still maximize our efforts. And so, that's going to play into Project Lighthouse. And then, the last thing is stepping out in faith, right? That we feel God has placed some incredible opportunities before us and it is time to step out in faith and to follow God's lead where God is leading us. And so, I want to hand the stage over to Mr. Gary Daniels, who is the Chair of our Church Council. And he's going to share with us a little bit more about what that calling is for us.
All right. Thank you, Jim. So, this one's been fun, but it's been decades in the making. And many of you may know, if you were here at the church, there's actually plans that illustrated a dedicated worship space sanctuary in that part of the land. Jim's points too on the what we can save. Keith is going to talk in a few minutes just about where we are financially. Keith's our finance chair. But it's expensive to do ministry. And so, these partnerships can potentially reduce our annual cost of doing ministry and use this facility even more than we're able to use today. So, we're pretty excited about it. But we've done this before. If you've been around a long time, you may remember needs assessments. You may have seen updated architectural drawings as far as how are we, you know, going to leverage that land and what do we need to do and how could we make a difference? But we've always been prevented from moving forward with that based on the investment that was required and the cost to build that facility. So, what we're sharing with you today is an opportunity where someone else that has a vision aligned with ours is willing to build us a worship space and a fellowship hall, and we're allowed to use it every Sunday and multiple days throughout the year at no cost to us. That includes no cost to even run the air or the electricity or the water in that building. So, we're pretty excited about this opportunity and it was time to bring it to all of you because the steps and the doors just keep being open. So, we're like, we gotta share this information with everyone, everyone at the church. So, let me go a little bit deeper into what this could be and what this could look like. So, if we go to the next slide here, we are talking about a dedicated worship space. So, if you've been to other churches and if you've seen churches that are thriving in Orlando and in Florida and across the country, they have updated. They've updated with what they can do and how they can present and serve the Lord and share the message. So, if you go to the next one too, you know, you can see this, that it would be our worship space every Sunday, many days throughout the year in addition to every Sunday. And then, they would use it for whether it's presentations or performances from local schools, whether that's from children's performing arts clubs or activities. But we would be in partnership and so there would be more people coming on the property for that. In the bottom right center, that's, it's hard to see, but there'd be dedicated rehearsal space for us, 24/7 every day, where we have the ability for our praise team to use that. And then, we have the ability to store our equipment coming in and out of there for the service as well. If you go to the next one, you can also start to see that connected to it would be a fellowship hall. Okay? And so, that would be for, we would have access to that certain days out of the year as well. At a minimum, I think it's around 20 days a year, we would have access to that. So, we've looked at what do we need on a typical year and what we could do with that. Okay? So, imagine a lock-in in that space. That'd be pretty, that'd be pretty cool. If you keep going, Sean, on here. Also, we've partnered with them to make sure that we had a welcoming environment when you would walk into that space for coffee. You can see on that first floor there, that's what that is, is a coffee area, seating area for people before and after services. We've also talked about making sure that this space felt worshipful. So, the entire front of this, of the stage area that wraps all the way around will have either LED or projection on it for us to control the entire environment, whether it looks like stained glass windows or whether it looks like the lemonade, I guess is what we have right now. You know, you would be able to do that as well. If you keep going, you can start to see the fellowship hall area. And again, no cost to us, 21 days out of the year. If you go to the next one, you can start to see just kind of what some of that could look like. Again, these are early, early renderings. So, lots to be done before things would be finalized on that front. But it would have a kitchen area as well in that fellowship hall. There's some, you know, still discussions going on regarding exactly what equipment's there and what's warmers and everything, but there'd be more to come there. But it would have the ability to host and have that capability as well. If you go to the next slide here, this is, again, a potential rendering of what it would look like on the outside. The left side of that where it says Lighthouse Theater, again, working name to be finalized, would be the entrance to the worship space and the Performing Arts Center. That would be digital signage. So, whenever we were using that facility, it would be peace would be on that large white rectangle. That's a digital sign. And so, it would be very clear that that was our worship space for the day. And then, on the right side of that, that's would be the entry into that fellowship hall area. And again, early renderings, but starts to give you a flavor of what that could look like. If you go to the next slide, where would it be on the property? So, if you see the words Peace United Methodist Church, that's where we're all sitting. That's the current building. And then, we would, this would be placed right next to the playground area, that fenced-in area is what we're looking at for that. And then, the Performing Arts Center worship space would be closest to ours, a fellowship hall further away. Those rendering for parking spaces, this is early renderings. We also don't know what's going to happen on the backside of this building. There's more work to do to understand if that space will be left as it is now, or if we're going to need access for traffic to make sure everything can function appropriately. And let me also say, we are going to have time for questions. So, if you're queuing them up, that's great. Keep them queued up. We're going to, after Keith goes, we'll open it up for questions as well. So, we are going to, you are going to have some time to ask questions as well. Okay? If you go to the next one. All right. So, what would happen to this space? If you don't know the history of this building, it was built for this to temporarily be used as a worship space, but not permanently. The wall on the back behind you is actually easily brought down. This ceiling actually runs all the way to the front of the building. So, if you look above like the youth room and area, it's just open with the ceiling ready to be moved. So, what we would be considering is to do more ministry is we would want to repurpose some space. So, basically, that wall moves in a little bit to give us more space. And then, that would enable us to have rooms for counseling and classroom, additional classrooms. And then, on the right of that would be extra space for Christian Help, for food pantry, for storing food, and as part of that ministry as well. Okay? All right. Then, if you take that, if you're, if some of the youth are here, this is what you want to see. Let's zoom in, let's zoom into that. Then, there will be a second floor on top of that. A complete dedicated youth space, a very large dedicated youth space on the second floor, additional classrooms, storage for youth. Actually, let Kenta have an office if she needs to talk to someone. And then, the tech booth basically would be on the second floor, be kind of like right up here, so we can get to these lights without ladders, as well as we would continue to use this space for services and other things that we have. So, we would still have a space, a little bit smaller, because our bigger space would be next door. Okay? And again, all of this is early concept, but just to give, we wanted to share with you a flavor of how this space could be repurposed to do more for ministry. Okay? All right. So, you may be wondering, well, how are we going to pay for this? How would we pay to renovate this? So, Mertz Productions is the company we're partnering with to potentially build the worship space and fellowship hall. So, at this point, there, what was being discussed is they would pay us half a million dollars for a portion of our land. So, I want to be clear, we would need to sell a portion of our land. We did look at land lease and other options, but this is the most effective way to do this and to accomplish it for all the parties. So, we would be selling a portion of the land, but then, they would build us at no cost, the worship space, fellowship hall, dedicated music space. So, then, we would look at capital campaigns. I don't know if any of you remember sustaining our mission. We did a campaign a few years ago when we needed to do chairs and carpet. That's an option. We have the opportunity potentially to, with our cell tower, we get monthly payments on that. We have the potential, they've offered us the ability to basically buy us out of that contract, which is good news, because if technology changes, we would lose that source of income. So, we're evaluating that as well as another source. Grants, when we, there are grants that are available when you serve the community, when you think about whether it's counseling or food insecurity or other things. So, there's grants. We've already started conversations with people that help write grants in those situations to get an idea of that. And then, the Methodist Foundation also, if we needed to borrow money, there is the ability to borrow at lower interest rates through the Methodist Foundation. Some of the other things we've thought about is green space, making sure that the space that's out there now, in between town loop and our parking lot, that would stay, green space. As I mentioned, we're not yet final on what would happen right out back. So, there's more work to do there to see, to see how that space would be used. And we also wanted to make sure that does still leave a space. If we did want to do an educational building, you would be able to do that out front or along the side in between the building and there. Okay? So, I hope this is sinking in. I wasn't, you didn't hallucinate. Someone would pay to build us a new worship space and fellowship hall. Okay? So, to say God's not at work, I think would be crazy. Jim and I continue to scratch our heads as things have been just falling into place as far as this opportunity. If you go to the next slide, there was another scripture that came to mind. You may remember the scripture what Jesus told the parable in Matthew of the servants that got, one got, the master gave him money, he invested it, you know, he got three times back. And then, there was another servant doubled it, but one servant buried it, didn't do anything with it. And then, the master was furious. It's a terrible way to live. It's criminal, cautiously like that. And then, take the thousand and give to the one that risks the most and get rid of this play it safe who won't go out on a limb and throw them into the darkness. So, as we've talked about this, like, wow, if we don't do this, would we be like that? We're trying to make sure we avoid that too, because this opportunity has presented itself. And we're, you know, we think it's going to be fantastic, actually. If you go to the next slide, so, just to kind of wrap up what Lighthouse is, this is about doing community ministry. We can't just serve ourselves. We can't just improve the building so it's nicer for all of us. What are we doing to help the community? And how could we help the community and the needs they have? We just had a sermon series where you, we all heard about personal stories about what's needed from a mental health standpoint. There actually is financial benefit to us. We can reduce costs, because when we partner with these ministries, they'll be subsidizing utilities. We'll be reducing the costs that we pay for association dues, because we'll have less land and things like that that many of you are aware of over the years. It's been challenging. Our building, it's about 30 years old, you know? So, it needs renovation. And so, this gives us an opportunity to update and renovate this building, but also to do it in a way to do more ministry and help peace grow. We can't expect things to change if we do nothing. You know, we're going to have to go out and we have to do things, some things differently if we expect things to change and grow. And I think we have a tremendous opportunity here. And also, you have to think about the way people are coming on our property for the counseling center, for the performing arts center, for other activities. And they're going to see how peace is a part of the solution and helping those in the community. All right. So, let me try to summarize here. All right, next slide. So, we want to grow and serve more of God's people in the community. We want to reduce the annual cost of doing ministry here. We're blessed with this land, but we haven't been able to figure out a way to leverage it in the last 25, 30 years. We think we have a way now. We want to partner with others. Many of you have been around where we've tried things and could we get the volunteers needed? Well, with partnering with an organization like Christian Help, what we've discussed with them is they run the facility. We'll obviously volunteer, but they coordinate volunteers. They run it. We've already, they've already had conversations with Second Harvest. Second Harvest is an organization that gets food from grocery stores, restaurants, and then distributes it. We've already had the conversation and they said there is a need in this zip code and they've penciled us in for this zip code to help with that already. But what it lets us do is not have to figure it out all on our own. We don't have to figure out, well, how do we do this? Who does the contact? We want to partner with these individuals. Same with the mental health professionals, providing them space to do this, but let the professionals provide the care, but we provide a safe place to do that. So, we're also, is letting us provide a worship space that can reach, you know, young families and those in the community and what they're looking for. But we couldn't afford to build it on our own. And this is a way, this is a way to do it. And then, again, repurposing our existing facility, update preschool space, update youth space, give the youth a proper space. If I feel for our youth, I said this once before, but they go to other churches and they see what the youth have, and then they come back here and it's very different and it's not appropriate, in my opinion, for what they should have as a safe place to come and hang out and grow in their faith. And then, be there for our congregation and our community. All right? So, you heard us correctly. This is an opportunity that's being presented to us. So, again, we're going to have questions. Today's the first day, not the last day. If we are going to sell the property, move forward in something like this, we have to do a church vote. We're penciling in August 4th as a time to do that, but we have, there's lots of things that have to happen between now and then, but we're kind of penciling in about a month. We can continue to have more conversations, more dialogues, but we're going to, we're going to start having some questions even today. So, if you go to the next slide, Sean, I think I'm done. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy, and then, we're going to continue to walk through this. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, I think. The script just changed. I just told Cindy.
You're doing great. Can we put our hands together for Gary's leadership through all of this? Really appreciate you. Really appreciate you. And just to let you know, like Gary alluded to, God's hands are in this thing, friends. Every step of the way, we've wondered, hey, is this going to, is this going to play out? And the door opens and we go to the next step and again, we find ourselves questioning and then the door opens. So, a couple of things I just want to clarify. One is, we didn't pursue this. Now, I can tell you, Gary and myself, we've been around for quite a while and we've dreamed of how we could achieve this vision that the church set forth so many years ago. So, we've been in conversations about what would it be like? Michael, who has been here for almost the entire time this church has been in existence, we've had conversations about this and how could we do this, right? And then, one day, one of our church members who owns Mertz Productions came to us and said, "Got this crazy idea." Having no clue that we were having these conversations through the years. What would you think if? And we went, oh my gosh, we've got to explore this. It came to us. When you look at the counseling center, the proposed space for a counseling center, we, you know, we were thinking, what are we going to create an entire ministry to do this on our own? No, we've got people that have come and joined this church, not even knowing that this is happening. And then, they come up to me and we're talking and we're like, hey, what do you do for a living? Oh, I'm a professional mental health counselor. What? And I'd say, hey, if we had space here, would you be interested in serving? Yeah. Oh, I'd be all about it. Yeah, that would be great. We have at least two people that are kind of chomping at the bit for that kind of space. It's been provided to us. And then, like Gary said, Christian Help, we find this partnership, we find this ministry that's doing great work, and we go to them and we say, hey, have you ever thought about expanding? And they said, well, let's check with Second Harvest, see if it's okay, which they did. And Second Harvest was like, please, we've been looking for a way to serve that portion of Orange County. I mean, it's unbelievable, friends, the way that God continues to lead us step by step. We're going to, one of the steps that we've got to do before the church vote, we're starting this work, is we're going to have to build a team, a building team of people that are going to help shepherd us through this whole process. And so, I called an old connection of mine from another church who is a retired real estate lawyer. And I said, Randy, would you be interested in helping out with this? Because we're going to need some real serious legal insight and support. And he's willing to do that for us and he's willing to do it for free, which is amazing. But get this, in talking to Randy, I learned he was actually serving in that way when this building was built. He actually served in that way to plant this church, friends. How crazy is that? And I had no clue that that was, that that was part of it. We've got somebody that actually is in the, does the work of grant writing and grant securing. And so, he's offered to jump in and help us in terms of where to find these grants and to how to fill out the forms and get the requests done. And then, last but not least, we're going to need somebody who understands construction, who understands building, who understands project management, because there's going to be a lot of moving parts, right? There's this guy in our church, I don't know, you might've heard of him. His name's Neil Blacketer. And, and it just so happens, it just so happens that Mr. Neil served. And I don't know if you chaired, but I know you served on the committee that built this building. And he was like, let me at it. Let's go. He was all on board for shepherding us through that piece where he will represent peace in all of these discussions with the, those who are building both buildings and renovating this one. What do you think about that? Do you think God's at work? We're gonna need more support. We're gonna need more engagement from all of you. And, but we're just excited that this opportunity is before us. You might be hearing a lot of words like probably, maybe. That's just because this is still very much in flux. Nothing is definite, at, at least until we have a vote. Your, this is your church. When you say, let's go, then we know we're definitely doing this, right? So we're waiting basically on you when it comes to August 4th. If you're gonna say, yes, we should do this as a church or not. But in addition to that, in addition to that, all of the things that you saw on the screen, all of that is negotiable stuff. We're continuing to have conversations with Mertz Productions and others. We, we have a working document in terms of a purchase agreement, in terms of a user agreement. All of those things are still very much in the negotiation stage. So, so if you're hearing maybe a little bit of like, you know, cautiousness or whatever, it's because nothing has been like fully set in place yet. Cause we need to vote before we can really set anything in place. All right, I'm gonna stop yapping because we've got our lay leader, Ms. Cindy Wheatley with us. And she's gonna take us into our next portion of the program.
So is your head spinning yet? I know mine was when, when Gary and Jim presented all of this to the leadership team. It takes a little bit of time for it to sink in, right? Cause there's just so many details and so much here that it, it just, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're, we're able to share this with you all today. And we've got a little more time to have more conversations. Because I think we, we, we really need to live into this vision. This is a God-sized vision that has been presented to us. And, and it, and it's gonna take us a little while to, to kind of really wrap our brains around, you know, what is happening. But I just wanna really commend Gary and Jim on the work they've done so far. Just to bring it to, to where we are today, because these are very complicated projects, as you all can imagine. And, and all the conversations and all the research and everything that had to happen, even to be able to bring it before you all today. So please, let's just say a word of thanks to, to Gary and Jim for the, the work that they've done. So far, there's still a lot more to do, as Gary mentioned. But, but really it is a tremendous, the, the due diligence that's involved in this is, is really mind boggling. But my husband Kent used a really good analogy when we were talking about this. He says, it's, it's like a football team that is planning to build a new stadium. And, and while that's very exciting and everybody, you know, we can't wait until we have this new stadium. They have to continue to build up the team so that they'll be good enough to play in the new stadium, right? And that's kind of what's happening here is we've got this amazing, exciting vision in front of us for Project Lighthouse. But it's gonna take several years for us to get there, right? And in many ways, peace is still in a rebuilding phase after COVID, which Keith is gonna share with us in a few minutes. So we still need to do all we can to ensure the health of our ministries today. And in those, those next few years, so that we make sure that our ministries are strong enough to fill these wonderful new facilities and to shine the light of Christ into the lives of those who need it the most. We do have an aging building that needs to be maintained. We have a thriving preschool that requires constant care. Now is the time when we need everyone to be faithful stewards of all that God has given us so that we can live into the mission that God has placed before us. So I'm gonna turn this over now to Keith Swider.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Keith Swider. I serve on the finance committee for the last two and a half years. I've chaired the committee last year and so far for the first half of this year. I'm blessed to work with eight other volunteers, members of this church who serve on that committee with me. And I know some of them are here today. If you're a finance committee member, can you just stand for just a second? And be recognized for your volunteer work? So today I'm gonna go through three slides real quick. I'm gonna kind of go over the 2024 budget and show you how we look today from a financial standpoint, from an operating standpoint. I'm gonna show you where we are year to date through May 31st, since the last time we closed the books. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about our, kind of our financial status. A little bit about some of the assets or the cash that we have built up. And also we're gonna talk about some of the liabilities and obligations that we have as a church. So if we can go to the first slide, this is the 2024 budget. The budget is in balance with $596,000 worth of spending and $596,000 of revenues. It does not include the preschool, since the preschool activities through the church are 100% refundable back to the church. It has no effect on our financial state, status. But the, the revenues come strictly from contributions is the biggest portion. It's about $400,000 of that $596,000 that we collect. The other biggest portion is programs. And there's three ways we kind of get program money. One is through some of the activities like the cell tower or renting out the building space, the kids playing soccer out in the field. Those are kind of fixed, kind of income pieces. There's what I call fair share. Youth members that attend mission trips will pay to be part of that program. So that's, that's recognized as revenue for the church. And then the last one is just straight donations by members to any of the ministries within the church. So if somebody donates directly to the youth for whatever reason, that money is declared as revenue. On the expense side, our biggest operating expenses are operating expenses. That includes all the labor for the church staff, includes the building maintenance, and includes all the administrative costs. And then the sec, the other two pieces are ministries and then our obligations to the district. So if you add up the, the kind of those two biggest pieces of revenue, they don't quite offset the whole $596,000 of expenses that we have. So in order to balance the budget, we had to use two sources of money that we had available to us. One is an ERC credit that we received a couple of years ago. So we're using $20,000 of that. And I'm gonna go through how we've used that here in a little bit and what's available on the last slide. And the other portion is we're using other money that was donated to the church in a non-restricted basis that was available to be used as the way the finance committee desired to use it. So let's go to the next slide. Here's where we are today. So on the revenue side, we're a little bit short, about $4,000 mainly on the contribution side. So revenues is a little bit short. Expenditures, we're also behind $22,000. On the worship side, we did have some expenses from 2023, dinner with Santa, trunk or treat expenses that actually hit in 2024. By the time they came through and hit the books, they, they end up on our books in 2024. That's because we're a cash basis accounting system. So whenever the money goes out the door, that's when we declare the expense. And then on the operating side, we do have, a majority of that is in labor. But we also have some administrative costs, office supplies is kind of running a little high and some other areas as well. So we got a little bit of catch up to do on the expenditure side throughout the year and a little bit hoping that the contribution line comes in, comes back in line before the end of the year. Now the question, you might have two kinds of questions. One, what happens if none of this comes back in line? And number two, how do we look, you know, as we embark on this great opportunity that we have in front of us? So let's talk about what's available to the church and what our obligations are. So we can go to the next slide now. So from an asset standpoint, we have restricted funds, about $150,000 worth of restricted funds. We have memorial funds, which have about 21, a little over $21,000 in it. And then ministries operating are kind of two buckets of very non-restricted funds that are available to the church. And then we have a donation made already towards this particular project to use as we're kind of embarking on it and, and incurring some expenses. So that's $149,000 worth of restricted funds or, or cash in the bank, so to speak. In addition, we have some money left over from our ERC credits. We received $274,000 when we received that ERC credit. ERC stands for Employee Retention Credit. It was part of the CARES Act. And it's something that the church earned as they operated during COVID. We used some of it in 2021, too. We're using some for 24 budget. We have $56,000 still unallocated at this point in time. So we have the 149,000 and the 56,000 in, in funds or cash in the bank right now. The real good news is on the liability side. We have no obligations. We have no short-term loans. We're not operating with a short-term cash out, you know, loan just to pay our bills. We have no long-term debt. We're not paying off any old capital campaigns. And we have no payables. You know, we don't have a stack of bills sitting on, on, on Jim's desk waiting to be paid right now. So we have no obligations from a, from a payment standpoint or a liability standpoint. So that's the good news and that's, that's where we're at. And I'll either take questions now or I'll take them at the end, maybe with everybody. What do you want to do? I'm finished. That was my three slides.
Okay. All right. All right. Can we put our hands together for Keith? Thank you, Keith. And we really want to thank Keith because him and his family just got back from some sort of Mediterranean cruise. And so he's still kind of getting used to our time schedule here. So thank you, Keith, for being here today and for presenting all of that. So we've got, you know, some really great opportunities. And now we've gotten a, a glimpse, a really quick glimpse at the, the financial realities of where we are as a church. And so as the representative of the leadership of the church, I'm just asking you to really consider how you can continue to support the ministries and the efforts of this church. The, you know, breaking ground on this new building isn't gonna happen tomorrow, right? And then renovating this building is not gonna take a weekend. And so we've got time. Let's, let's even say, I mean, this isn't specific, but let's just say three years before we're really even living into the fullness of that vision. So the question before us right now is, if we believe in the vision, how can we then live into that vision and strengthen that vision today? To get us through this three-year period to the point where that is, that, that is a reality. And so, you know, the, the app that you have, if you, if you have our church center app and you're set up on that, you can actually go right to that app and see where you are with your giving. It'll give you a glimpse of, you know, if you made a pledge, it'll tell you how far along you are in that pledge. And you know, if you, if you give to the church, you probably get that email. That's, that's an automatically generated email. It tells you, thank you for your gift. Here's where you are on your pledge. You can go right to the bottom and see it there. But take, take, take a minute today and look at that and see where you are with your, with your giving. And maybe, you know, you have to do a little bit more to, to kind of get caught up to be current. Or you can, you can give more. Right? We can always go beyond that. But we are, we don't take your giving lightly. We, we, we are grateful for the ways in which you were supporting the ministries. But let's take a serious look at that. And, you know, when you're traveling and you're going on a family vacation, just because you're not here, doesn't mean you, you can't continue to, to give of that offering to the Lord. You can even set it up to automatically just get, you know, get pulled out of your, of your bank account. I don't think Jesus had that in place when, when he was doing ministry, but, but how amazing is that? So that's an option for you as well. And then also, you know, just engaging with the work of the church, friends. This is not a once a week thing that we're doing here where you come and you consume worship and then go home. This is about discipleship, us growing in our faith. And so worship is just a portion of it. Can you get involved in a ministry? Can you serve on a committee? Can you help change the lives of the children in our community? Or spend some time with me and a great group of people in the Shalom Bible Study class at 9:30? Can you get involved more than just coming and being here for an hour on Sundays? We need you. We need you to be all in with us. We've been talking a lot this year about the, the, the power of the presence. And we're gonna keep going through the rest of this year with that theme. And I don't know if you remember, but it was early on in the year where Gary stand up in front of us and he said, the time's now. It is time for us to do these things. And so let's dig in our feet and let's get to work, cause it's gonna be a fun ride. And so let's do this together as one. Amen? Amen. All right. So is Kaden Stockdale still in the room? Yeah, Kaden, you're gonna help. Kaden, after all his heavy lifting this morning, he's gonna be our microphone holder. And so, Kaden, I'm gonna give you this microphone. And, and so we're gonna open the floor to questions. I'm just gonna ask it. You raise your hand. Let's, let's take like, you know, we don't want to be here for, till five o'clock, right? So let's, we'll, we'll do this for abbreviated amount of time, but let's get some of those early questions. And then, and then we'll, you know, we'll wrap up. So if you have a question and you're bold enough, raise your hand. Awesome, Rick. Thanks. You might need to unmute the, the, is it, it's unmuted? Great. Okay. Come on up, Gary.
Being a member of the church on church council, I do have a couple of questions. So how many acres is?
Eight-ish. It's around eight. He asked how many acres. It's about, the full property is around eight.
And what has it been appraised at?
You know, Keith was looking that up the other day. We don't yet have a breakdown of what we would be selling yet. We're, we're actually that early in the process. It's, it is appraised, I think, Keith, or if you remember, it was around a million-ish or 800. But we would be potentially, they would be offering us less than what the land's appraised for because they're building us a building and then we, we use it in perpetuity forever. So we, it's not a, we're not looking to, you know, we have to consider what they're investing in the building. Because it would be probably plus 10 million to build this type, type of facility for us.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think it would be good to get an appraisal so we can say, okay, hey, this is.
It's happening. Yeah, it's happening. We just don't have it back yet. So the land will be appraised. So we understand and we can factor, that'll be factored into it.
Okay. And there's like some sort of a lease I take that will be, how, how does it work as far as like, okay?
Yeah.
How does the deal work?
Yeah. So there's two agreements that are currently being drafted. One is a, one is a purchase agreement and one is a user agreement. The user agreement is, gives us our rights to the building and defining that upfront. And so the purchase agreement is largely what they would be paying for the land and what they're committing to build and what those facilities are. And then the user agreement defines what our access is to it. And so right now, it's, it's worded as every Sunday, plus 15 additional days a year, we, we can use that. We use the worship space as ours to use. And then the fellowship hall is 21 days a year. We have access to use that at no charge to us. Both of those are, are no charge to us. We have to have some liability insurance, but that's something we already have. But we, we would have to make sure that, that's covered. And so then it gets into details like, and I didn't mention this, but in addition to us using the facility, they are gonna staff the facility every Sunday. So they will be staffing it with entertainment techs because they need to train their techs. That's part of what this facility is for them. So they will actually be providing people at no cost to us to run the cameras, to run the equipment, to run the sound. So in addition to our volunteers, they'll actually be providing the ability, excuse me, individuals to do that. That's currently part of the, part of the user agreement right now for that piece of it. Are there any specifics though, that you're thinking about that I might be able to answer?
Well, I guess the, the one concern maybe would be, well, okay. As long as this corporation is good and viable, we're all good. But if that's not the case, then, then we've got somebody owning that land there and then what happens?
Yeah. Two things about that. That is, we're still finalizing. That is probably, I think, I remember just talking about this too. We, part of the agreement is going to be, if the land is ever sold, our access and our user agreement maintains and passes to the new owner. The other thing that's in the agreement right now is if they ever were to leave, we have first right to purchase the land back and purchase the facility back. If we were not in a financial position to do that, we, our rights would maintain of using the building. So they would have to sell the property with that stipulation that Peace Church is in there with the same number of days that we are in the, in the agreement. So that it would carry over to new, it would have to carry over to new ownership. I don't think we would do this if we don't get that in place. And so again, the deal's not signed, but that's what's drafted right now is it has to transfer over into new ownership.
Okay. And I mean, I know those kind of questions are.
No, it's, it's okay.
But I, you know, I, I love the church just like we all do.
Yeah.
And, you know, we just want to make sure that we're thinking about everything and, you know.
And that's what this is for. And you don't have to just think about it today. If you think about something tomorrow or tonight, we'd love to know too. Cause we're trying to make sure that we're, you know, we're protected as well as we can. And again, it is a balance though. It's a, it's a partnership. That's why we chose that word is because it has to be viable for this other company to invest a lot and give us the access to it. So there is, we're, we're trying to get that balance right in that partnership.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
And just to follow up real quick on, on the viability of their business. We, we, we have, part of the agreement is they're gonna provide for us a, a financial overview of their company and a financial overview of, of their contract to build this building. So that we're able to see, you know, that they can prove they have the, the, the ability to do what, you know, their end of the deal. But also that they're in a good financial standing.
And they, and they have secured funding from the bank. So we also waited because if they couldn't get that, why were we even gonna talk about this? They've passed that hurdle. So then we felt like we needed to, to start this conversation.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's exciting.
I think there's a couple over there.
Thank you. I think all of this is great. It sounds really fantastic. So, but what happens if they sell the facility and it's no longer a performing arts center? If it's, let's just make up something, if it becomes a restaurant, what happens then?
I hope it's good. I hope it's good food, yeah.
Yeah, it's got to be great food with wine and bread. But anyway, it would, we have to make sure, that's what, you know, we were talking about just a second ago, the sale is going to be conditional on our access to it in perpetuity. And so what that means is even if they sell, they would have to sell it and that agreement has to carry over to the next owner that we get to continue to do it, as well as they can't change the format of the facility significantly. So they couldn't rip out all the seats or or not have the ability to have seats or not have the ability to have sound or not have the ability to have the projection and the lighting and the screen. So you're bringing up the, I think, the biggest, I would call it deal breaker, is where this would fall apart is if we don't have that guarantee because that is a big risk. Now, you could remodel the space again and then come back, but we don't think that's the right thing or what God's calling us to do. We think we're called to do, do more ministry, so, yeah.
Thank you. My name is Roger Raymond. I'm on the finance committee here at the church. I've been on the Greater Naples Markel YMC Finance Committee for the past 25 years, past president of the organization, which is a lot bigger budget than here. And so we were very, very responsible about doing certain things. The thing I heard today, which would scare me a little bit, is being too ambitious on the date. We would take way more than 35 days to make a decision where we had a vote of, say, in this case, the YMCA board before we did that. So I think you need to make sure that everything is dotted, T's crossed. And on the board, if we got a packet, it would have had a fifth square up there that said downside. What are the bad things? And I think maybe we look at that, that way everybody can have an open mind and see what's going on because I think it's a great idea. But there are some things that could create a problem. And I don't want, this could go on forever, right? So that's just an outlook on that.
Yeah, and just feed us those, what we want to do is we want to have a specific list of, these are the open, these are the open questions, and then work it, work the list and and go through it.
And then just one thing, I appreciate what you're saying about the ambitiousness of that timeline. Part of what we're trying to juggle here, we, and I can't believe we forgot to 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 bring this up. We took time and met with the president and general manager of the Hunters Creek Community Association. And we were like tiptoeing in that meeting like, oh, boy, how is this going to go? And as as we presented everything, at the end of it, they they said, look, the hair is standing up on our arms, we're getting, we're getting chills. This is unbelievable. We want to support this any way we can, and we want to make sure that this happens, which was a huge positive response.
I was there, I was a witness, it actually happened.
And so there are some, there are some meetings that are happening at the like local government level in early August. And they really want to just jump at getting this in front of them so that we can make sure all like zoning and all the stuff that I don't understand can 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 be taken care of. And so in order for them to go public in that way, because those meetings are public, in order for them to be able to go public, we said, hey, our church, we want them to be the first ones to hear about this and to know. And so that's why we we held this now was because we wanted to get this in front of all of us before it went too far down the line in a more public nature. But also, we wouldn't want them to go to those meetings if we, as a church, weren't bought in, right? And so we have to kind of have some sort of vote before those meetings occur so that, you know, they can go forward with goodwill as well. And so, yeah, it's a little, it's, I don't know. But there's a little bit of a drive there, which I I agree with what you're saying, though, Roger. It is ambitious.
Yeah, and we also, things we've been talking about and adding to the agreement are things, like if they have an event, they're providing security for the whole property, you know, any event they have because we can't control every event they have because they may have an event like the, what is it? The Pew, what's the Hugh Pavilion at Dr. Phil, Pew Pavilion at Dr. Phillips? You know, that's a 400-seat theater as well. You could see other performing arts, you know, you know, types of experiences there. So we wanted to make sure that was covered. We've gotten into, like we said, the air conditioning and the utilities for that building, so we didn't have another incremental cost. We've talked to Christian Health about them subsidizing our utility costs. And so they would be paying for a percentage of our utilities because they're using, using our building as well. So those are some of the things, and Roger, you mentioned downsides. Those are some of the downsides that we've tried to frame up, with the biggest one being the biggest risk, and I want to say it again, is if they sell the property in the future or if the ownership changes. That's the big one. That's the one we have to be super comfortable about, that we have protection for us as we move forward, so.
Yeah. Where's Kayden? Awesome.
She's got it.
I'm looking now towards even future. Are we going to still have like VBS here in kids' camp? Is that our, this building would be for that?
We actually already wrote in the agreement that we get a week straight in the fellowship hall there if we want to use it for VBS. So you have the.
But like you only get the kitchen for 21 days, you know what I'm saying? And we feed dinner every night there and.
You have the option, you know, it's either, it's either or. The point was, we we tried to make sure you had the option. If you wanted to do VBS there, you could do it, or you can keep it here. It's it's either way.
And so they would still have the camps and all the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
And this is because actually is a good question for my father, too.
No, I have not been on Penguin Trek yet.
That's next week. But a good question I have is like, since I know we do two separate services, one's contemporary, others traditional, I believe? Would we do like one service with the new building and a second service here?
It's a great idea, Zach. Can you serve on the committee? No, and we, I didn't plant that question, but thank you for bringing that up. So so yes, you know, Gary mentioned in the presentation, but let's just land on that for a quick second here. Part of the renovation of this building would be to include and to maintain some sort of large-room gathering space, basically in this area right here. And so imagine, and I'm probably getting too far ahead of myself, but just imagine if we were to remove this portion of the stage and this portion of the stage and then fan chairs around like a U, we would have a really nice space for a traditional worship service if that felt more appropriate for a preschool graduation, for any kind of like, you know, other gathering. And so, so, yeah, so I I think it's too soon to tell like where all the services would happen. But, you know, for those who aren't really fond of getting up at 8:30 in the morning for a worship service, we potentially could even adjust the times where some, you know, like we're almost doing a little bit of a crossover, where we're having a traditional service happening here, a contemporary service happening in the new space. So there's a lot of options there, but that is definitely on the table, yeah.
So my question has to do with the conference. I was just curious how, have you had these conversations with the Florida United Methodist Conference and how they are feeling about it and just kind of how that goes with the land as well?
Yeah, it's a great question. So Craig Smelter is like the the chair of finance for the conference, and we've become really good friends. We absolutely have had meetings with him. We've had meetings with my my boss, which is the district superintendent. So it was Bob Bouchong, and now it's Sharon Austin. And and so all of them are are supportive of this. They they've been kind of tracking along with us. It was one of the first people we met with just to say, can we, are we allowed to sell the land? Because I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but the the conference technically owns the property and the land, right? And so, so we needed to get that answer. And so, yes, turns out, we can sell our land. We just have to use it, we can't use it for programmatic purposes. We have to use it for property and building. We've also met with, gone before the District Land and Building Usage Committee. And that's a more localized committee. It kind of is like the Board of Trustees of our district. And and so we've met with them, presented to them. They were in approval of it. They haven't signed on the dotted line quite yet, but we do, you know, we do anticipate that they will. And and so so they're, you know, aware and supportive at this point.
And this is awesome, what was great was you learn, this is a model they're actually excited about and doing quite a bit. In Miami, there was a church that did something very, very similar. It was incredibly successful where they sold the land and then the church retained a portion of the land, and then there was a skyscraper above it, actually. But it it's worked really well as far as ways to leverage the the property and the assets we have. And again, it's been, and to Jim's point, I just want to highlight it again. The stipulation is the profit we make from the land goes to back into renovating this building or our facilities. And so that's why we had that board where we mentioned, that's one of the ways to pay for the renovation is we can't use that money and then pay salaries with it, as an example. It goes back into the facilities is is what makes that okay.
And then I just wanted to add, if this is okay. One of the areas you guys talked about for funding is through the United Methodist Foundation. I serve on the Board of Directors for the United Methodist Foundation for Florida. And there are projects like this that are happening all the time that we, as the Board of Directors, have to approve. So I just wanted to hopefully like give a sense of like peace and assurance that that's like a real thing and it happens. And our interest rates are low, and it's it's good. So I just wanted to give an affirmation on that if we needed to go that route because I know, especially now because we are living in like no liabilities, I know that that might be a little scary, but it's, it's good. There are lots of United Methodist churches around the state of Florida that especially do it for building renovations and things like that. And the money is handled very well, I promise.
And we're hoping you don't have to excuse yourself from that vote when you're.
Yeah, that might be awkward, but we'll see.
Let's just take like maybe one or two more questions if we could.
I may have missed this earlier, but I've been here forever. And that kitchen, as part of the renovation of this building, is that kitchen going to be renovated as well? And if so, is it going to be renovated to the point where we could actually run food service out of that kitchen beyond what Second Harvest is going to do?
Quick, a quick show of hands. How many of you all in here would love to see the kitchen renovated? Yes, Larry, you are on to something, my friend.
Yeah, Larry, the, yes, we're still in conversations with them. They have some permitting and some code things they have to work out. If they have a full kitchen with a hood, it creates a lot of expense and a lot of things. So we don't know yet. We know they're going to have facilities, like if you do a convention and a caterer brings everything, you've got all the warmers, you've got everything, that we know for sure will be there. What we don't yet know is how much of a full kitchen it would, it would have. So, yes, the absolute intention is to finally get to renovating, renovating that kitchen. Absolutely right, yep.
So as a part of the contracts being drafted, is there a distinction when the calendar would be made about those 21 days that we would be using the other building? Is it annually, quarterly? When will we be deciding what days we'd be using?
Yeah, it's 18 months, which the good news is Christmas always falls on the 25th, and we can figure that out. But it is one of the things we have to work out. It's something we're not super excited about because that duration is 18 months. But for them to be able to sign agreements with traveling shows or, you know, children's, they have to have no, they have to have the ability to do that. So currently still being negotiated, as of right now, it's in there at 18, at 18 months. We also added a provision that we have, we're first in so that they can't have someone else at 24 months, is that we would be the first in. So that was in our last red line that we sent back to them. But as of right now, it's 18 months for that.
Heidi, you have the last.
I get the last word.
Imagine Heidi getting the last word. How perfect, how perfect, go ahead.
I think this is very exciting with a new kitchen and a new youth space and maybe a youth worship center and all the possibilities that come. I just wanted, from the perspective, like Gary said, we go other places and we see what the standards are, and then we come back here and we're like, womp, womp. One of those things that I would just like to make sure that you're planning for are shower facilities. That would be just as important as a kitchen and youth space.
Well, showers.
Have you been to the shower in the?
We have.
Not that shower space.
Fun fact, there's a closet that is also a shower in this building. It's never been used as a shower. But we're, we don't yet have an, the cost, the cost for this renovation is being kept low right now because we aren't doing a bathroom. And we aren't doing, there's really no water. It's all electric, HVAC, et cetera. We've heard the requests for showers. We're trying, we're also talking to Murch to see if they're backstage areas. I didn't highlight it a shit of because Michael's been trying to help us work through this. They have backstage areas. They have backstage areas, so the dressing room area behind the stage. We're trying to get an answer from them if they are providing showers in that building that we could have access to. And but we, we will, we have it on the list. We have it on the list.
I'll take the microphone back now, please. And Heidi, I hear you being a volunteer that before we get those showers, you're going to welcome anybody from the church to come to your house and take one, right? So I want to welcome back Cindy Wheatley to close us in a prayer. And I'm actually going to ask that you, that you stand. And let's join hands together as we, as we do this prayer.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we are just in awe of how you've been at work to bring Project Lighthouse to life. Continue to guide our discussions and decisions as we navigate all the details and pathways toward the realization of this God-sized vision. Grant us your grace for the gap between now and then. Grant us wisdom, grant us courage. Build us up to be the people who can live out this vision to be a beacon of your light in this community. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Thank you.